I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say that. Motion is second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's four one, four nothing, pardon me, one round here. To consign items, the current meeting, meds, bills, financial statements. Any questions on the meds? On the fund balance comparison, a little bit better shape than last month, so that's the direction we're hoping to go. And in discussions with Chris today, we're going to consider putting maybe two or three months' worth on this page, so you can see how we were last month and the month prior compared. So although it's still compared to a year ago, we'll try to get maybe a two or three month trend.
The thing that I was kind of asking down for is if we can see that difference, you know, per month, if we're going up or down, that might help us with our decision with the ISL too.
So we'll implement that next month. I did look at general fund or operating fund, because that's the one I watched the whole system last month. It was negative ninety-nine, this month it's negative ninety-three. So not a big change. On the bills, did a couple highlights of the bigger ones, and if you have questions, you can ask them. On the first page, credit card services, that's the credit cards that we have in the district. There's a number of things on that invoice. There was some equipment for the Buzz Barn and custodial staff. The assessment next turn up saw there was travel for counselors to a convention. There was travel for students for the Canada trip. There were supplies for technology and some other custodial slash maintenance supplies for the restrooms. So there was a number of things in that number. With the little farther down, Cengage Learning is one you don't see real often. That's high school software for our desktop publishing class. About two-thirds of the way down, Edline for thirty-nine ninety-five and twelve cents. It's a school webpage, people we have a webpage published through. That's for July through next June, so that's for calendar fiscal year. Then the last one on the first page, direct communications network. That was the installation and about three-month service for our twenty-five meg connection between Saxon and I do. So while that'll probably turn into a monthly or quarterly bill, it won't be that large. On the next page, about the fourth or fifth one down, Jevero Incorporated is a company we've never used before. We had a fuel oil tank in Wall Lake that we don't use anymore, and so that was to give that tank out, ready to abandon that. About two-thirds of the way down, Odyssey Ware. I think we've had discussions about Odyssey Ware, but that's the bill for this year. Region twelve is transportation for two students in opposite directions, one to Storm Lake and one to Carroll.
For how long a period is that, a month?
That's a month, yeah. The one to Storm Lake is daily, the one to Carroll is not daily. Two or three times a week.
Twice a week.
Twice a week. The last one on that page is property tax on our farm ground. I guess in page, the next page three there, nine thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars to technical feeder services is to repair the auditorium lighting from a lightning strike some time ago. And that is completely reimbursed by my city director by insurance. In the activity fund, I don't think I had many notes. Just some reimbursements and some notes that, for instance, the bill was something unique for basketball jerseys was reimbursed by students. Management fund bills are just last year's audits finally come through. That's balanced deal. Nutrition fund bill. Just want to give the bill, do you have any certain things you're worried about? Okay. I didn't entertain a motion to approve the bill to Albright Oil for eleven hundred forty-eight dollars.
I'll say.
There's a motion in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then entertain a motion to approve the bills to Lakeview Lumber and Wall Lake Lumber for a total of one thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. Motion in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Then I'll need a motion to approve last month's minutes, the financial statements of the remaining bills on account. Motion in the second, there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Education Spotlight, that'll make the cool tools.
Go ahead and pass this out, save your time here. In my report, I put two charts there for you. It's our PBIS data up to the point. As you can see, we are, in most instances there, we're below or right at twenty-fifth percentile in the nation for lowest referrals in a school system. So we kind of hang in there with our referrals and their low. And part of that is due to some of the processes that we have going on. Another piece that I gave you and John handed out is some academic data on the NAATEC. I think it's important that you understand a little bit about what's going on academically in the nation. Our Wall Lake students do take the NAATEC test. And if you've read the Moyn Register, all they kind of grill pile on all the falling scores and how we're becoming less and less competitive in the United States as far as our student academics. And you can see there, I know you can read charts, it really doesn't indicate that as much as maybe what the papers do. So just some academic data that you look at. And Becky is here. She was recipient of a grant here just lately. And fortunately, I got a letter back from the Counselors Association that she just missed being counselor of the year. So she's going to talk to us a little bit about PBIS data. And I told her to keep it short, because she can keep it here till ten or so.
And that's true. I can talk on this, but so I'm going to try to just get somebody to be. One of the things that I hope you guys are aware of, but our whole elementary school, maybe you were, but this is the second year that we've been recognized as the parent model school. This year, we're the only state, the only school in the state to get that recognition. And that's due to our high-level implementation of PBIS. And when I talk about that, and even the grant that I received, I mean, I guess, you know, it's nice that I was recognized for that, but it is, it is a team effort. I couldn't do it without the efforts of administration and teachers. And so, I mean, I guess maybe I'm the one who just hasn't let it die. You know, kind of been that positive name, say, let's keep going, let's keep going. But there's all the teaching staff, the support staff, help us with that. So just kind of so you're aware of that. PBIS, the first slide there, and I don't have it up on a screen because it's small. Sometimes it gets a little small. Sorry if you guys cut that, I said anything, people often make it my last. But the idea of high school, like PBIS, is prevention, multiple systems meet multiple needs. We actively teach behavior expectations. So at the end of the year, we go and we teach the kids, this is how you walk down hall. This is how you use the playground playground. This is how you use the bathroom. This is how you go through the lunch line. And we actively do that. And then we have them practice. And then we acknowledge them, yes, that's right. That's how you do that. Good job, way to go. Yes, you're using your hallway basics. That's a big part of it. Consistent consequences to problem behaviors. So the last times people get caught up in it's all acknowledgement, acknowledgement, acknowledgement. And it's also about when there are behaviors, you know, how do we have consequences so that they can change your behavior too? The next bullet is big. We collect and use the data for decision-making. And that is just huge. And I guess as a school counselor, if I look back and think at how I'm using data now, it's like, wow, I never knew I would even know how to do it. And now it's like we can't, how to make decisions without it. I can't even believe I'm saying that. I mean, that's how far I've come in my growth of data decision-making, but that's huge. And then the last thing, there's function-based interventions for students with chronic problem behaviors. And through our last trainings, we're really starting to understand that more. It's taking us longer. But when a kid has a behavior, there's reason, there's a function. And what we've found is if we can dig in and get the right function, our plan around the kid works. And it sounds like it should be easier than it is, but to get that right function, it's taken us a while. And we aren't even there a hundred percent all the time with all of our behavior plans, but we're just starting to figure it out, and it just makes so much sense. That second slide there, kind of the whole idea of PBIS. You have systems on the left, that circle. What we've learned is, a lot of this is about the adults in the building. And how do the adults work with the kids? And how do we change the environment around the kid to help them be successful? Not change the kid. So that was huge learning for us. And then the next, on the right is information. That's the data part. All our decisions are supported through data. The practices on the bottom, you know, that's the adults doing the practices, but that's really there to support the kids. So we've implemented cool tools, and as the adults, we have to do that. But it's a practice that helps support all kids' behavior. And I'll talk a little bit more about what cool tools are in a little bit. But then our whole goal is to see then is what we get for outcomes. And then at the top, it's social competence, academic achievement, and safety. That's what this is all about. You know, so that idea of twenty-first century skills from Iowa Core, you know, using, learning those things, I mean, we're actively teaching those. And like, if I forget something, chime in, okay? Because I'm going to go over that here. The third slide there is the triangle, the idea of, so we teach the behavior expectations. All students get it. All students are taught. Now eighty percent of them are going to get it and not have any problems. Then there's going to be the next tier, we call that tier two, who even though we've taught it to them, they're still going to have issues. So we have secondary systems for them to help them. How do we support them so that they can be successful too? And then the top of the triangle is those individuals, those very specific individual plans that we have for our most active kids. So it's, you know, it's here. And then if you flip over, this next slide is kind of where I want to do the bulk of talking. The idea, it's kind of taking the triangle and it's flipped it over. I'm sorry about the quality. I thought about just doing this one slide right here, because it's the bulk of it. But how we're response to intervention. And I don't know if you've heard that term, it's becoming very big at the state level. This one, their movements, they're going all response intervention. So much so that at a training, I heard them say that the state is looking at all schools and the state is going, will be responsive intervention. And whether that means PBIS or not, but responsive intervention schools by the year 2020. And their model for behavior is PBIS. And that's what they're going to push. And I don't think they're maybe will mandate that. I don't know how that looks, but so what that means is, okay, universally, we teach the expectations, I told you about that. All kids get that. Another thing, all kids get are cool tools. And what our cool tools are, we have fourth grade students who do a little announcement every morning. And they'll get on, and I'm not even sure what this next week's going to be. Well, okay, an example that we've done has been greeting, greeting others. Okay, that's a skill, twenty-first century skill that kids need to know. And you think, gosh, everybody knows how to greet people? Not necessarily. You'd be surprised, you have adults who don't necessarily make eye contact or say hi, you know, as well as. So the nice, the cool tool for this week is greeting others. So, I mean, you know, and a little blur with it, you know? It's important to greet others, so make them feel welcome when they come into our school. So all week long, every teacher in both elementary buildings then does a little mini lesson on greeting others. Why do we want to do that? You know, so why is it important? How, what does it look like? You know, so every room, every classroom is doing a little mini lesson on it. So they talk about eye contact, about how you might, your facial expression, how you might want to smile, you know, what it would look like if you did it, you know, what kind of greeting would that be? Hmm, huh, hmm. But then, then they practice it. And then all week long, we're not, wow, great greeting. I can see you're using a cool tool. Way to go, you know? And the cool thing about that is, as a counselor, I have about four hundred, three hundred ninety, I think, more students. And every teacher helping me teach social skills to the kids. And we're all on the same page in terms of what skill are we teaching this week? So the next week is please and thank you. So we're teaching them to say please and thank you. Other skills help me out, I kind of just don't like.
Keeping hands to self.
Hands and feet to self. It's every week, and then sometimes we'll go back, one, during I took a recent skill, Iowa Assessment Week, it was ignoring distractions. You know, how are you going to ignore distractions within the room? You know, staying focused and getting stuff. And then we'll go back and review some of those. But the kids are involved in it, and then also the acknowledgement seems to go up around that because we have a focus on what I can give a ticket for today is, oh, we're going, oh, and you said good morning to me, and I had to say, you know, yeah, you must say it to us first. You know, rather than us going, like, good morning, you know, and you finally get it. They're, they're walking by, saying, good morning, Mrs. Harper. It's like, whoa, yeah, here's your cool tool. Way to go, you said good morning. You were looking at me. So it gives us direction in how to teach them. So that's an example of universally, how we've done that. Then if you look on the right side, going down is interventions. And then the left side is assessment. This is where we start to talk responsive intervention. So the first thing there is called check-in, check-out. We call it Raider Club. And that's designed to be a low-level intervention for kids, that we can get them on there quickly, within two days. But what it is, is then they move, or the future then, once they're on Raider Club, is reminded that, hey, this, we've taught everybody skills, but this kid's still usable with extra help. So they, they're on this like chart kind of system. And the chart is, is a reminder to me as the adult, that this kid needs more help. So it's not about the kid having their chart. But it's about me going over before class and saying, hey, Brad, and whispering, keep your hands and feet to yourself, get your work done, no offers. And I can trust you even if I'm not watching it. You know what? I know you, and this is kind of whispered, it's not necessarily further, but I know you can do it, I'll be watching for that and hopefully give you offerings. So then I do, because mine may have two kids in my room, and it's pretty generic. You know what I did is hands and feet to self, no offers, work done, and I can trust you even if I'm not watching. Okay, and so then I teach class, and after about two minutes, if you go morning period, I'll go back and say, wow, you did a great job of hands and feet to yourself. You only have a free offer, so I'm going to offer you that.
That's great.
And that mean I can't trust you, so I mark them, and then.
Yeah, trust them.
But then I'm like, but you know what? We're headed to the next part, and you know what? I know you can do all three. And so it's, it's also about a lot of positive attention around teaching and reteaching skills. And so all throughout the day, the business happens. They have a special location where they check in in the morning, and then a special location where they, that same location where they go check out. We're trying to make it where kids sing us, oh, I get on Raider Club. You know, because then we have, you know, we want to make it so that it's fun and it's exciting thing to be doing. And we do have kids, that's weird. Now, when we started it, we went this way, we had to learn, you know? It wasn't always that way. We had to learn about if we were knocking kids down because they didn't have their chart. It's okay, no, that's not, but I thought that was okay too. So this is kind of a process, and we are growing this back. But then the next thing is, we look at that data. And our goal is, we have a team that says, we want to get eighty percent of the points, a hundred percent of the time. So a team meets, and we're like, okay, we've got thirteen kids on check-in, check-out, and ten of them are responding. That's what responsive intervention is. Ten of them aren't forgetting it. Hey, we got these other two. What are we going to do with them? They're not responding. We might say, let's keep them on it for one more, two more, to our next level TV, and then let's see where they're at. Or we might move them to the next level, which is social academic instruction. If I have two little kiddos, we're going to go with an academic behavior skills group. So they're going to come into me once a week, and now I'm going to individualize their chart to the skill that I'm teaching them. So the first skill is going to be focused listening. You know, and then you have to look, sit still, and think. And so I'm really focusing on those skills with them. And then not only that, but I'm working with them in my office on that skill. They go back to the classroom, the teacher has a chart that has that skill on it. So now when they go in there, check in, they're like, hey. Look, sit still, and they know what that is, because we, and the teacher knows what it is, so you can do it. And then I'm teaching them, and I'm going back, wow, you were looking at me, you kept your hand still, and because you answered a question, I can tell you I was thinking about what I was talking about. Now, yes, you're getting that skill. So it's a lot of positive interaction back and forth with the adult. But the cool thing about, and as a counselor, I used to run a small group. And they were feel-good, small groups, you know? And kids loved coming in, and I have a friendship group. And at the end, I say, you know, a little evaluation, and they'd say, I liked it, and yeah, I'd recommend this to another kid. But I didn't really know if they were transferring it to another study. This way, I may look at that data on this, what I'm doing. Are they doing it on the thing? Or in this case, it's academic behaviors, are they doing this field education in the classroom? And then we'll monitor that check-in, check-out data to say, hey, now I've got these two on this academic behavior group, this isn't working for them, because the team, you know, they're rating them. And if it's not, you know, if it is, then we'll keep work, six weeks of skills, and then we might move them off. If not, then maybe we need to go to a functional behavior assessment. What's going on? What, what's, what's the real function behind their behavior? And then they might need a more individualized playtime. The very tip, but no, the right side's our intervention. So it's kind of like a continual, you know, like from lowest level to the most intense level. But we try, when we get a kid, we'll try to put them on that Raider Club right away, because if you think about it, for thirteen kids, ten of them, whoo! Now we got it for ten kids, we've got support, and they're going on. Now we can focus our energies, we'll just keep supporting them a little bit with that, that's the intervention. Now let's focus on these two who need academic behavior skills. You know, so it's, it's more efficient and effective way to work with kids' behaviors. All the way to the tip of the triangle, which is called wraparound. And wraparound is a very intense way to work with the family. And in those cases, sometimes we've had families move in where it's like boom. And I was able to say, this is kind of, kind of cool, say, you know what? We're a PBIS school. And as a PBIS school, you know, we have these kind of systems in place. And what, you know what? It sounds like that kind of lot of things going on. And we'd like to work with you, maybe a different way than schools work with you. We need your help with that. Would that be part of the team, or maybe you can develop a team yourself? Does that sound, sound like something you'd be interested in being a part of? And that whole part is initial conversations, it's getting engaged with us. Because we can't work with a family who's got high needs unless they're engaged with us. And so then they develop a team around, and then we work. And we have different kinds of tools that we use to assess. But amazingly, a lot of times we'll back up and say, well, let's, let's put them on check-in, check-out, let's get them in this group. I mean, we'll use lower-level interventions, but then we'll tweak it a little bit for that individualized kid. And the next thing is, there's no magic wand, that boom, you just, I mean, it's a lot of these just targeted things where we go and give them support. But we've had, in the, in the wraparound families that we've worked with, we've had some pretty good outcomes there in terms of families feeling like they're part of that group, and they're in charge, and they have ownership of it. And we have data that we do with that too, to say, is our group functioning? Is this, are they moving? And our, our whole goal is always to move them back down to more natural supports. You know, that's our goal. So that's kind of RTI, I hope I explained that well enough. The next one is the, how we have teams working around us. I have a universal, we have a universal team that really talks about Swiss data. How many referrals are happening on the playground, how many classrooms, what systems issues are we going to change? Well, let's try, since, you know, a lot of referrals are happening at the end of recess, let's go with no lines. You know what? Because it seems like when we line them all up, all we do is push and shove, push and shove, and push and shove. So you know what? Let's try, let's try kindergarten just walk right in. We won't corral them, you know, little five-year-olds in a line, and expect them to stand there and keep their hands to themselves when it takes ten minutes to get everybody else lined up. So that's, that's, but that's the adults. You know, sometimes we put kids in situations where they have no thing, nothing to do, except misbehave. So how, how can we change the environment to maybe make it less, reduce the number of referrals at the end of recess? And then we'll just monitor the data, is, is that working? So that's kind of a way of how we, the universal team might make decisions based on data. The secondary systems team, we sit and talk about, like I told you, well, we've got thirteen kids on check-in, check-out, ten are, ten are responding. At the beginning of the year, in one of our buildings, we had ten kids on, and not one was responding. So we sat down like, whoa, that's not a kid issue, that's an adult issue. I mean, the intervention should check out that way. And then the other building, we had like twelve on and eleven were responding. So it's like, okay, what's going on here? So you have to go back and reteach the adults about the intervention. It's not about the chart, because sometimes they want to get into the idea of, well, they didn't bring their chart to you, so I'm going to mark them down. It's like, nope, that's not, chart is there to remind me that Chuck needs more help with this. So I'm going to be going to Chuck, not Chuck from the dream. And it'd be kind of like if I had a class of math students, you know, and somebody needed help with math, like, they don't do it. Would I punish them because they didn't score you on math assignment? No, I'd be like, wow, you need help, this skill, let's help. Help you build that skill. Now, does that mean we don't have consequences? We have, kids have behavior issues, and we have consequences. But so that's what that team does, monitors, check-in, check-out, social academic instruction of groups. And then we have our problem-solving team, which is our grade-level team meetings, where we sit down, every grade level comes in, and we may there talk about individual kids, about how we do the function behavior assessment. And then our tier three group is overall processes of the tier three. And then the last slide there, I think it's the last one, no, it's not the last, sorry. Just showing how behaviors, what we've learned is that a lot of times it mirrors academics. And what would we do if a kid wasn't reading very well? We'd help, we'd give support, to try to give them support, you know? So the same thing with behavior, if they have struggles with behavior, we're going to provide them with intervention, and then we're going to monitor it. Is what we're doing working or not? The last three slides are just examples of data that we use at all three levels. The first one, our universal team would look at something like that. You know, those are our number of referrals, and we can't see that very well, sorry, but oh six, oh seven, oh seven, oh eight, oh eight, oh nine, oh nine, ten, ten, eleven. And this was came up in presentation, so it's not exactly printed. But you can see how we reduce the number of referrals. The next one is a student who's not check-in, check-out. And our goal is eighty percent, so you can see there are some dots below eighty percent there. So we would say possibly, actually, there's movements, to me, like there's two. So we would have a discussion around this one. Is two enough? I mean, yeah, we would technically say they're not responding. Is there a group going that we can move them into? Does the teacher just want to keep trying and check-in, check-out for a little bit more?
Doesn't matter how many days, Becky, it looks to me like it's about a month, from May tenth to April.
Yeah, we will kind of, yeah. Because sometimes we have kids who like, start off, maybe you have three in the pool, and you get slammed, and they're going, it's like, okay, now they're responding. So we sometimes will give them a little chance.
It'll feel like they had a bad day on, and they have.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, the, the. And then the bottom one, homeschool community tool, we use that with wraparound. The last slide, oh, there, you can't see that very well too, but. The idea of there is, they do, we sit down with the family, and they do a whole perspective tool on like, do you feel like if they have charts, or your child, do you feel like they are getting along with the adults at school? Do other needs take it? Do they have transportation to school? And then ask abroad, and then they rate it across homeschool community. And then as a team, we work, obviously, our work there is to increase, this is showing baseline in time too. We sit down with the family and do that multiple times, to see, is there perception of how things going, changing based on us working together as a team? So I think that, you know, a big thing is that piece of data with it, which is a huge learning for me. a huge learning for me, and I think for a lot of our staff, and we're still learning, you know, there's still things we need to get better at. Is it perfect? No, but we feel like we've come a long way, and we've had some really good opportunities for training that have been awesome, so. Questions? Sorry.
I don't have a question, but a comment, like you just said at the end there. And one of the things I wrote down was this kind of a constantly changing model. It's not really set in stone how you do it.
Exactly, continuous improvement, too. You know, it's evaluation, how are we doing, what can we do to get better? How are we doing now? And what are our strengths, where we, how can we get better? I mean, continuous.
The thing about it, every person is different, every kid is different, so you can't do the same thing for everyone.
Well, another thing that you see here is, there hasn't always been acceptance of failure as part of the learning and teaching process. But you recognize now that failure is part of the learning and teaching process, and it can be, the instructor, as well as the student, can be experiencing the failure in a portion of this. And it isn't something that you have to punish, it's something that you have to look back and try to find, analyze, what are we missing here? And then come back and try to make the situation better.
Exactly. And what's amazed me is how we've been able to use the data, it's like, wow, no kids are responding. Whoa, what's going on, guys? This isn't right. And it was, you know, an okay discussion for something. It's us, this isn't the kid, this is us, this is the adults. You know, and so, within a month, we were back up to almost all, I think, I forgot two numbers to check, but it was just reviewed and reminded, but yeah, you're right, we are constantly looking at how we.
I think it would help the teachers, too, because there's so many discipline issues in the lower grades, I mean, and just to know that everything's consistent, this is how I, you know, the kids are learning these things, and this is how I handle the outbursts where you used to, you know, some teachers were very strict, and some not strict enough, and now it's more consistent.
Getting everybody on the same page.
And I think it would help them, too, to know, well, this is how I should handle this situation, maybe.
Well, yeah, and I guess even by myself, I mean, as a counselor, I can always felt like, you know, kind of alone out on this island, and the teacher would swim, you know, swim out, say, oh, I've got this kid, and then I try to throw a few life checks, and sometimes they're sick, and sometimes they're, you know, it's just kind of like individual, individual things at different times, and this is just much more systematically, too, you know, where it's like, okay, we know what to do, let's try this. And for a lot of them, it's going to work, it's going to be the answer. We know for some it's not, but then we individualize that more for them. And that's just like, wow, kind of like, okay, and a team, I'm working with a team, you know, it's not just me, or just me and Mike, you know, we have a team of people who will meet, and let's problem solve through this, so.
It's just be bad that there's no way to really let the people know exactly what you're doing, and the approach that is being taken, and how it's succeeding for you, and that sort of thing, you know. It's often the case in education, but someone does not see nor understand exactly where the gains are being made.
You know, and I guess just, we have had some challenges with parents upset about, you know, radar club. On the other hand, we've had, had a family in tears at conferences, because they were leaving our district, moving to another district, and their daughter had just gone on radar club, and they had, for the first time, seen her, and even teachers were commenting on her, she's walking through the school, she's got her head held high, and literally cried at conferences, because they're going to another district, and could this district do this, too? And I'm like, and I ended up calling over there, but it's like, you know, the hard part about that is, it's part of the big system. I mean, it's, this is, you know, from teaching the behavior expectations, to now, I mean, to, I mean, that's what checks, that's what makes radar club work, is because it's within the whole system of how we do business, you know, and checking in and checking out, and monitoring the data, and having a team to look at that, you know. So I did call over there, and she was thankful for that, but I kind of warned her, I said, you know, it's kind of one of those things, it's, you know. So, yeah, but I know, and I always look at that challenge as, how do we communicate that more to, you know, and to, to, yeah, you know, and I think, you know, with our, with the parent mouth award and this grant, you know, and it's been in the paper a little bit, hopefully that gives at least someone, you know, that's one of the pluses out of that. You know, we were talking about being on the cave while the spotlight coming up, and we're going to be talking about cool tools, and, you know, so that helps, so if there's, you know, I just, that's a challenge.
It helps a lot to get the parents involved, like if you've got a child at school that needs some help, teacher comes to the parent, and parents talk to the teacher, you know, talk to the kid at home and to the kid at school, they get it from both ends. And then when you get all the teachers on the same page at school, they know that, when I see this teacher, this is the response I'm going to get, because they're all on the same page.
Well, anything that you can do to help the parents accept ownership of the school is very big.
Yeah.
You know, it's a tough concept for them to grasp, I don't know why, but it's tough for them to understand that they have ownership of the school, they should accept it, they should be proud of it, they should make it work to the best advantage of their child.
And especially with communication, it seems like if you get one person happy, they're going to tell ten. If you have one, in fact, that lady was trying to count, she probably told one other person. You know how that is, you know? It's kind of the law of business, you know, when you get your customers, they're happy, they're going to tell one, if they're unhappy, they're going to tell twenty. So, but, you know, I think, I don't know the exact number, but we've helped, I suppose, up to where, you know, forty kids, with this intervention, intervention, forty to fifty, being pretty successful.
Well, I'm very impressed with what you, Mike, and the teachers under work, and what you're doing, I think it's sort of, you know, really good.
And we're excited about where, you know, the work we have left.
Obviously, others in the state recognize that it's, it's, you're getting the job.
I just emailed a AIA individual today that wants another school district to come and watch. And again, I said in the email, we're continuously trying to improve the process, so we may be talking about that when they come, but, you know, well, we're happy to share, too. I know we've met a lot of, had a lot of schools already come to ESAC County to kind of watch some of the process.
Just to have the process in place is a big deal.
Oh.
Whether or not it's right, it's a big deal.
It's a lot of work and a lot of commitment, but it's, once you see the results, it's just, okay, it's all worth it, and he's going to start to follow it. And I think what he's talking about is, you know, it almost be, like, we've become a demonstration site for schools to come and see, how are we implementing this, what are we doing? And so you're aware, I mean, I'm out presenting at this, the conference, and, you know, so I get emails, hey, how's, you know, questioning, how is it going? So, you know.
Let's something that's the same today as it has been for the last how many years, part of your compensation as a teacher is seeing the success that you're achieving. If you can't see any success, you can't stand in education very long, but if you, if you see people making progress, starting to bloom because of things that you're doing as an individual or as part of a team, then I can't help but make a big impression on you and then help you to stay in that profession. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you follow that, or should we move on to something else?
I think we're going to change the order. In the future, right? Yeah, so, a couple of things, just briefly mentioned. Update with the insurance study committee, there's informational meetings scheduled at each of the schools the week of January end to look at health insurance, and then we'll follow those up with question-and-answer sessions. That's process, and that's just where we're at in the process. I believe, Chris, you mentioned that looking at some data, where the time comes for instructional support, that was one of the things I was going to remind the board of, and the public as we get ready for the next fiscal year, putting together the budget. The board will have a couple of decisions to make with instructional support, I think. One is the percentage, and two, what's the, how do you want to divide up whatever percentages decided between property tax and council tax? That's what was approved. So that will be coming, and we'll get you more information on that. It's too bad Becky left. She had, I think, about three kid activities going on. She worked with the deCAT people on a grant application called the Watch Dogs program. She came to talk to me about that, and I don't know, Mike, are you familiar, if they have heard on that yet?
Not yet, I think it just went out last week.
Yeah, it was only a couple, it was in the last couple of weeks, but Watch Dogs is the Dads of Great Students is what the acronym stands for. The gist of the program is really giving fathers into the school system in an organized, orchestrated, facilitated manner, partially as role models, partially for school safety, for a lot of things to put dads in the school. And it sounds pretty intriguing, so we'll see how that goes. Loring Hospital received a large grant from the USDA, two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, dealing with telemedicine. We were part of that, we did absolutely none of the writing, that was all that Loring, and we really appreciate their efforts, but they included us as part of this telemedicine thing, or this grant, so that we'll actually have a real-time video in all four buildings that will allow our school nurse to actually see and visit kids and/or staff in any of the four buildings without actually travel. And then also, the system will be linked to the ER at Loring if there's an emergency, and it's just, it's an awesome thing for the school, it really is. And thanks to Loring Hospital for including us in that. There's going to be more and more information coming out, if you've been following the state, at the state level, competency-based education. And the latest thing that's come out of that is that the state will be giving local districts an opportunity to submit a waiver. And that waiver really is to give you time to figure out the whole notion of competency based and what it means, without having fear of being held accountable for not reaching some particular requirement that's currently in place when it comes to educational units and whatnot. What we'll do, just because we got this information, it was today, Monday, it would have been Thursday of last week, I believe, about the process that the state's taking, we'll come back in January to the board, probably going to ask you to approve that waiver. And the reason we do that is if you don't approve the waiver, you don't have any options. If you approve the waiver, then you have the option of studying, and it leaves, it leaves some things open, and so that's what we'll, we'll give you more information before that, that's the direction that we're likely to go. Probably the only other update would be that we're in the process of moving on a couple, on the agricultural education position. We actually interviewed some candidates for long-term subposition later this week, and that process is moving along. We're very content with that process, now it's working. The other one is that, I talked to you a while back about middle school interventionists. What I believe we're going to do, I believe this is what we're going to do, is that we're going to look at a long-term subposition for that after the first of the year, actually filling Sarah Boyle's spot, and we'll become the interventionist. And remember the intervention, if you heard the concept that Becky was talking about, RTI. This isn't part of that system per se, that it's the same concept, that there is a problem, in this case, identified academic problems, and then there is a person that's dealing with the intervention to try to improve it. We knew this was a need before we got started with the senior process, but it also coincides nicely with that. So we'll give you some more information on that in January. Then the only other thing I would bring up, I guess, is, I don't think we've met all readers this year yet. When the meeting's over, if you'd like to see the remodeled bathrooms, we can show you those. That sounds funny, but you should look at them compared to what they were before the remodel took place, so we can hit that. So that's what I have on that part of the report. Any questions, comments? Yep, and Denny, I told Denny to go ahead and get ready, he's got the counselor here tonight, and so I said I would just update, we promised to do this each month from where we're at in the process. It'll get a bit repetitive, because this is a time-consuming process, so there may not be a whole lot to report in particular months, but just an update is that the middle school staff has met twice thus far, we're scheduled to meet again, I believe, on, must be Wednesday, or Thursday, I've got it written down, I'll be there. And then we're scheduled one to two times per month for the remainder of the school year, and each of those sessions with the staff are earmarked with what we're doing, and got outside consultant assisting us with that, Dr. Wesley Moore. Initially, for the entire faculty, the focus is on preliminary steps involving collaborative school culture, and developing core values and core beliefs and different things. Math teachers, the other piece of the sign-up process, they're scheduled for a day-long session on December twentieth with some AIA math consultants, and with a focus being there on understanding and implementing the ideal core within the math area, since that's the area that's identified, there's a lot of work to be done there, and it's still unfolding. Last point, I guess, I give as a reminder is, this is a process. It's going to take time, and we're going to stay with it, so.
Is there, is there a timeline that the state gives you?
It's a two-year period, okay, yeah.
Yep.
Yep, two-year period. And regardless of whatever happens with test scores this year, it's still a two-year Any other questions?
Kevin is sick, too, by the way, so Mike's sitting by himself. We have no unfinished business, so let's move to new business. First item there is to discuss under approval of modified allowable growth, the dropout Paragraph in the, when you're backing about there, if you have any questions or comments or critique, would you like?
Well, say a little bit, and John can talk, too, and I'll certainly deal with any questions. Just the modified allowable growth is, in a nutshell, is that a local district, local board has the opportunity or the option of a local levy, and there's stipulations on what it can be used for, and the amount, and all of that, that's all set by the state, but the board has the option of a local levy that focuses on dropout prevention. And I don't know all of the history over the years with the two districts prior to becoming ESAC. I know last year, which is for this year, both the SAC and the WLDA board approved the modified allowable growth focused on dropout prevention. A couple of things to consider, the programming that this supports is, it supports the high school at-risk program, which includes credit recovery as well as skill development. It supports the middle school at-risk program, which is also credit recovery and skill development at this building. And it supports the Flex Ed Center, which is the alternative high school, that's what the money is used for, for that program. What's different this year, why the numbers are a little different than what they would have been last year, what we're asking for. One is the school IAs in position that we added last May, remember, I said this would be coming out of the modified allowable growth. Well, that's what we've got built in as part of it. And then the other thing that's, that has been added, why the numbers are a bit different than last year, is the Odysseyware program that we've been talking about the last couple months, the web-based curriculum program that is being utilized at the Flex Ed Center, it's being utilized at the high schools, it's being utilized at the middle school. And at this point, it hasn't been utilized at the elementary, but it's capable of going down through grade three. That particular program doesn't, it's identified for the at-risk, but it also has possibilities being used for acceleration for the other end of the continuum. So it's a product, and it's something that we feel strongly about, we have. So that's, that's my spiel on it. Do you have numbers, question, John has numbers?
Yeah, I guess I'll just address any questions. The page that looks like this makes more sense than the two paragraphs from the state looks like, but basically, we've identified a total projected budget for next year of three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars in salary and benefits, plus twenty-five thousand for Odysseyware, to give us a total budget of three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. Twenty-five percent of that minimum has to come from the general fund, so eighty-five thousand comes from general balance of two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand that we're asking for modified allowable growth on, comes out to eighty-five cents per thousand on the taxes using last year's tax rate. using last year's tax rate, or taxable valuation.
What was it last year?
Last year, one district was right at sixty cents, and the other one seventy cents. And don't ask you which was which, but I think SAC was sixty cents, and WLDA was seventy. Last year, the total dollars we were asking for was a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, as opposed to the two-fifty-three. The maximum for ESAC County, we could've asked for two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. You'll see that on one detail in that spreadsheet.
And if it approves, then also it, it's, those are the programs that are part of the year, but then we also have to break out some of the costs involved with our school counselors and get a percentage of that focused on At-Risk kids, and that's, we have to do all of that as a benchmark. We've always operated, some districts have operated on maxing this out because you, you have local control of it. We've operated the last two years on sitting and studying carefully what our needs are, and, and that's what we ask for, so that, hence why it's not the maximum, this is what we believe we need to run going for At-Risk.
Any questions about? Would anybody like to?
I'll make a motion that we go with the eighty-five cents per thousand maximum allowable growth tax rate.
Second. Okay, a motion second, relative to the, when the proposal, Michael, maximum allowable growth tax rate. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. I should maybe back up here just a second, I, in the reports, Mike, I don't know if anybody here, any questions?
That's all.
Or anything that you need?
I did it before.
Okay, AV, discuss under approve, the SAC Education Foundation trustees.
That's been a function, there's, the formal name is the SAC Community School Education Foundation, and this is a process that the SAC board has been doing since probably nineteen or twenty-two or twenty-eight, when the foundation actually was started, as part of their bylaws, is that they submit the names of the new trustees for board approval. And so the SAC board has always done this in the past, and if it's second, it's passed on to ESC. The three names are returning members to the, to the foundation, Reggie Oils, Asger Swanson, Rita Sanderson, they have served on as trustees in the foundation at least one term, maybe more, so I recommend that you approve us.
I'll make a motion that we approve this list of trustees.
One second.
We have a motion a second to approve the trustees' names presented for the SAC Community School Education Foundation. Vote to it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Can I get one more vote in there before I move on?
Sure. You know, the group is very dedicated to doing some good things, and just to make sure you and the public know, they have some money, and it's generated, it's generated different sources, but they provide some scholarships at the, at the end of the year for seniors, they also provide the wish list opportunity for the schools, for things above and beyond normal, things that the school can provide, and they also do the Hall of Fame, if you walk out, you see the Hall of Fame from, from people that have come through the SAC system, and they do their work.
Is there, I guess I'll just bring it up, is there anybody who broke something off paying the name of it? I guess, yeah. I don't know the right way to do it.
But I've, I've had the discussion, okay? And, and it's, it's not a, because truthfully, I was, the last meeting, and I've attended almost every meeting all through last year and this year, as, as I'll piss you on my perspective, I truly thought it was called the SAC Education Foundation, and I saw the station there, and I went, oh crap. Asked him about that, and there, there was a legal opinion given that the large gift that was given to start the foundation is tied directly to that name, and it really doesn't matter, I'm repeating this, from a legal perspective, that there is no longer SAC Community School District, doesn't matter from a legal perspective of them being able to do it, that was the explanation. And we will, you know, there was a former, there is a WLDA foundation too, and actually in January, John's gonna come with me to the SAC Foundation, and we're gonna start discussions, I don't know where we're gonna go, you know, about what the future looks like, but it's a good question, Ron.
Thanks.
Personnel, Eddie Henn here tonight, didn't have any resignations, but found out that we do have two now, so, John, do you wanna read those about?
Yeah, I will, we have, these are coaching resignations, resignation from Sammy Bruce as a junior high volleyball coach. It is with summer regret that I am submitting my letter of resignation as assistant junior high volleyball coach. I have enjoyed working with the girls and feel I've been a positive influence on the players and the program. The demands my job and my family have become too great to continuous coach. In order to be an effective teacher in the classroom, I feel I need to be available after school to work closely with the other second grade teachers in lesson planning. My children are becoming more active in extracurricular activities, and this requires me to be free to transport them and be available to attend their events. The physical demands of the job are getting to be too much for someone with a need replacement as well. Please accept my resignation, and thank you for allowing me to be a coach for the last several years. I've enjoyed my experience as junior high volleyball coach. And the next one's from Becky Holber for the same position. Please accept this letter of resignation as head junior high volleyball coach. I've enjoyed my time as a junior high coach, and I feel that I have had a positive impact on the volleyball program. However, as my four children get older, I'm finding it almost impossible to keep up with everyone's schedule in the fall. I would also like to be able to go back to school for my administration, administrative degree, and resigning this position may allow me to do that. For those reasons, along with the increasing demands of my current position, I'm resigning my coaching position. Thank you for the opportunity to be the junior high head volleyball coach, and for considering this letter of resignation. Becky Holber and Sammy Bruce as middle school volleyball.
I'll make a motion to accept all presentations.
A second.
Motion second, to accept my resignation. Vote aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries five zero. I thank both for outstanding service to the community. Contracts? No contracts. Discuss future agendas and updates.
The, there's five Mondays in January, so the third one, by my calculations, Monday, January sixteenth. What I suggested was to consider a couple of things. That night, there's JV wrestling, there's middle school basketball at four o'clock, and then there's varsity boys and girls basketball at six o'clock. I suggest, and whatever before you consider, and do whatever you please. If we may, if we stay on the third Monday, let's meet at five o'clock, and let's meet at SAC again, so we have opportunities to go to activities to choose to, or move to the fourth Monday of the month, which would be January twenty-third. There's one conflict with school that night, which is JV boys and girls basketball, and that's, they just choose section, or section two, option two, then the meeting probably should be in the side of part of the district, we've been up here three months in a row, which has worked out great, and that's fine, because there are reasons for it, but if there's an option, we should just go back to the table. There you go.
What's your preference on that?
Becky, you'd be here at four o'clock? So you're thinking Monday, January sixteenth, so it's a good date.
Can you be here at five o'clock?
Yeah.
January sixteenth.
Got the boardroom at SAC Elementary? Or do you wanna, I guess I suggested that because there's a whole lobby that night.
I'm more scared for me.
You can see mostly, not go over.
I'm more scared for me.
That's fine, let's, let's do that then.
Any agenda items you'd like to see?
No, I'd like to get an update, don't ever hear anything about it anymore, so I think that's a good, on the bully, the national, it was a big deal when you named, kind of on your plate bottom, so I think it's probably gotten a lot better than, probably an update a little better. Maybe we'll, yeah, might need to make that like dance model. Yeah, it's been, yeah. Anything else that's out there?
Um, I think we should add a couple that I made against Canada.
Oh, yeah.
We'll just have to, we gotta cross the border.
We kept waiting for a phone call, that we're stuck in Canada, come get, nope. Had a good, good experience.
What's going on with the bag instruction?
Absolutely. Personal have two weeks of experience with them. Hopefully they've got.
Two weeks of experience.
And that position is what I needed to finish that one.
Before I got it.
What's that?
We'll be adjourned in a second.